Started up with.
Yeah, no, no, Tom.
I'm talking.
Jacob, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Yes, I can.
We're at six, Jacob. Do you want to start and then after we. To the pledge handed over just for the the sake of simplicity.
Sure.
Sure.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Six oh one P M. This is the regular business meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so you can probably hear that my voice sounds terrible. And Robert is also sick and he's the vice chair. So normally he would preside over these meetings. But since I'm on Zoom and he's on Zoom, I'm gonna have our supervisor, Michael Albert, conduct the meeting in the room. So, Michael, take it away.
Thanks, Jacob. I will say, Jacob, you actually sound louder than in person. So, but.
No, that's nice.
We'll be, we'll be good.
Very nice.
All right, let's go through. Minutes for February seventh. You guys have all the materials, correct?
Yes.
Jacob, okay.
That we approve the minute.
And so I need a motion to approve that was made by Jacob, I think, just now.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
All right, that's seconded. Any questions? Is there questions from? Wow, my name is spelled wrong and number ten. We can correct that's M I C H A E L. And also.
Oh, and might include that change then.
Perfect. I reviewed. I don't have any other issues. All right. Can I hear all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, any opposed? No, all right, minutes have been approved. Okay, announcements, Rivers Edge Bike Park Committee meeting will be held March sixth at six P M. Jacob, did you want to say anything on this point?
On Rivers Edge now, that would, that would be with Alex.
Alex, any, anything we should know about that? Where is?
It'll be here in this room.
Okay. Who's in? I can ask who's on that committee?
I don't have all the names off the top of my head, but I can get it for you.
Obviously approved. Okay, all right.
Robert is the supervisor liaison for that meeting. He'll also be supervisor for Middle Smithfield Township. Here and then also the director of Parks and Rec over there, Chris, will be here in addition to members of the public. There are members of the committee.
It's an open meeting. Anyone can.
Yep. Is it? For public, we encourage public participation.
Perfect, thank you. Few announcements on some various executive sessions that we've been having related to personnel. So there was an executive session held on February sixteenth. From five P M to six P M on personnel, another on February twenty second from six thirty two to six thirty four. Had a quick exchange and we are now trying to have a standing executive session. In the thirty minutes before our meetings. So we did have one today from five thirty to six to five fifty, also related to personnel. So those are those announcements. And then renaming the creek campaign. Some comments are due to Alex on by March fifteenth. Maybe this is the right time to very quickly, provide a very quick update on that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to give an update.
Yeah, this is related to the renaming of Sambo Creek.
Yeah, so I sent, I let the supervisors know the email that the stakeholders met a couple of Mondays ago. The new preferred name, including the township commissioners nearby adjacent municipalities, is the historically relevant name, the Massin Creek. And we also heard from the Lake Valhalla community that they'd like to rename the little Sambo Whitetail Creek, which is a native species as opposed to the swan. In a nutshell, that's where we're at now. As I understand it, the board would like to continue to accept public comments through March fifteenth afterwards, that period, you know, so, you know, that's. That's my summary.
I'm sorry, Alex, I didn't catch the first one. What was the first name?
Uh, the Massin Creek.
A Massin?
Yeah. It's based on the speech by Susan Klepp. From Monroe County Historical Association in two thousand twelve. Historical association members felt like if you must rename the creek, it should be historically relevant. And that is the name of a Native American gentleman who helped save the life of an escaped African American. This, I posted the story up on the website.
Okay.
They would like to read it. It's fairly lengthy, but it's a good read.
And you received a, a letter of support from. Lenape, is that correct? From who?
We, we, we received a letter of support from an organization called the Lenape Nation of Pennsylvania.
Okay.
We are collaborating with the Monroe County Historical Association to reach out to the federally recognized tribes to.
Oh, all right.
Get their formal input on this, this new name.
Okay.
That's where we're at again.
Awesome. So if you have any comments, public, that you'd like or input, you'd like to give that, please provide that to Alex by March fifteenth. All right, those are all the announcements. Bills and obligations, we need to consider the unpaid bills detail. General fund, one hundred seventy one thousand four hundred forty one and eighty two cents. As for a fund, one thousand two hundred and fifty. Can I hear a motion, Jacob, or?
A move.
And motion by Jacob Pride, any second?
Second.
Second from Robert Lovenheim. I had just one question. Most of it's pretty explanatory. Engineer, legal, lots of salt, geez. I don't know, it was, it was. Give me ten seconds here, sorry guys. I guess I just didn't know what Fuller's fabrication, that was a big bill.
Uh, that was for repairing one of our vehicles. Fuller's fabrication does metal and welding. I can.
No, that's fine. Okay, any questions for you guys? No? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor to.
Hi.
Amendment? Hi, all right, no opposed, all right. And sign checks after the meeting, great. Next, Solicitor's Report is next on the agenda. Ron.
Yes, good evening. Well, like a little head cold, but I don't want to be spreading it all around. So at best I just stay here and, and sniffle on my own, if you will. Uh, but I'm certainly well enough to attend to your Zoom, so I appreciate that opportunity. Uh, for the month of February, that has not been a whole lot of activity, other than my researching. In book and researching in computer and working on the road safety ordinance that I've prepared in a. Number of draft forms. Every time I prepare one, Robert has great ideas and sends a, an email and then I make another draft and then. I make another draft. So that's what really much I've been spending most of my time with in February, other than, of course, phone calls and other items like that. So that's it.
Any questions from the supervisors?
No.
Any comment, questions? From the public? No? Oh, yes.
Michael, this ordinance, what is this order more than, they gave us details about it?
We've been discussing this for a little while. It was around concerns that have been raised by multiple members of. Um, Shawnee Valley related to safety and there was agreement that we didn't have a right to. Sort of impose anything considering it's private road and there was discussion around the possibility of an ordinance. We wanted to see what it would look like. As it relates to general road safety across the township, regardless of whether it's private, public, and someone's, you know, backyard. We just have an ordinance, nothing's been adopted or even fully reviewed yet, so.
We do have the ordinance available on the website for a public review. If you go to the township website. Under Resources, you'll see Open Township Projects and then you can scroll down to Road Safety Ordinance Development and we have a page dedicated to it.
Now, is that on our, our agenda today? I think it is.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're gonna talk about that. All right, great. Moving on to engineers' reports.
Thank you, Michael. The only two things that we're working on outside of our normal project reviews. Is airstrip road is, I think, as everyone knows, is under construction, so there's, there's coordination with that. Uh, and getting the permit for one of the tollards across the road. So that's, that's ongoing work. And probably a bigger topic would be the postal road bridge, but that is. Uh, down farther, further under old business, so we can discuss that at that time.
All right. Any, any comments? Okay, fantastic. Let's move on to the consent agenda. So in the consent agenda, we are looking to consider the approved updated twenty twenty three eligibility list for the fire. Shawnee Fire Company members to ratify the advertisement of a twenty twenty four spring cleanup bid. To award a seating quote for Township Fields to Primrose Landscape. Landscaping to accept the twenty twenty two draft audit. Um, and to hire a finance director. Can I first, since the consent agenda, get a, a motion in a second? Or we discuss?
I moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jacob Pride, second by Robert Lovenheim. Um, do we have any? Supervisors, any discussion on any of these items?
Um, just that I think that you have in your packet. The acceptance letter from Bonnie Winters for Finance Director. I believe that's in front of you. So that has all of that information. Oh, and just to clarify, the Shawnee Fire Company list, that's for the volunteer service tax credit program.
Yeah, so I have that, that's. Seven volunteers, my twenty three. And then, am I looking at all of the bits and we're going with Primrose?
Correct.
Significantly cheaper, it looks like.
Oh, yes.
All right. And we've all reviewed the audited financial statements and had a presentation. From the auditors. Which generally is we're in a much better position because of a, a significant increase in net assets. Uh, sorry, in fixed assets that were not previously on our books, which is good. I don't know if I have Bonnie's letter, but I, I know. All right. Do we need to actually in this, to actually talk about that it is Bonnie that is the formal hire?
Um, I mean, I would say that we certainly can, uh, and obviously she, well, she accepted, correct, Julia?
That's correct, yes.
The recommendation.
Perfect. All right. So we have a motion for the consent agenda. Uh, any comments from? Public on these consent agenda items? No? All right. Um, all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. No opposed. Congratulations to our bids and to Bonnie and all that stuff. All right, we have decided to. Did you call, uh, D C R A Water Service?
Yes, I, I spoke to Dave Horton. Uh, he is okay with us tabling his presentation until March twenty seventh. So he'll be on our next, our second meeting in March.
All right.
Julia, one last thing on the, the consent agenda, quick. Uh, can you tell the public the dates for spring cleanup?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, spring cleanup this year is just like normal, the first Wednesday at their Mother's Day. So we are going to be doing spring cleanup from Wednesday, May fifteenth until Saturday, May eighteenth. Um, that's open right here at the township building from eight to five.
What's that mean, though? For the, what, what does that mean for the township is doing spring cleanup?
Uh, so what that means is that we will have a bunch of dumpsters here and bring a, a, a various sundry of items. Once we get the bit approved, we will be able to release a list of items that are acceptable and unacceptable. Um, but generally speaking, we don't accept things like hazardous waste, but we will accept the old sofa that you no longer need. The refrigerator that has stopped working. Uh, you can also get rid of, let's say you have an old rug that you're not a fan of anymore. We will not accept any general household garbage, uh, but this is your opportunity to reduce the waste that you have in your house and make your area a little bit cleaner for yourself.
Electronic things?
We do accept all electronics. Uh, but all of Monroe County is covered under the ERISAC. So if you have things like computers, monitors, mouse, keyboards, uh, cabling, ethernet, all of that is accepted for free, TVs as well.
Generally no paint, did you say that?
Uh, yes, generally.
Usually clean paint is.
Yeah, uh, paint, um, it, and it, and this is actually one of the ones that will vary with the hauler. Um, generally speaking, though, they will accept it if you've mixed it with kitty litter and it has become entirely hardened. But that varies based on who is accepting the information. So as soon as we have the bid, we open the bid and we award the bid, we'll be able to feed with the hauler and get that information straightened out and out to the public.
Julia, I think it was fifteen dollars a carload last time, is that correct?
I don't remember off of this office.
Unless you have the bill now.
Yeah, once we have the bid, we'll, we'll find out what's going on.
And what were the dates again last, last?
Uh, Wednesday, May fifteenth through Saturday, May eighteen.
We'll have an event up for this and, and whatnot, uh, for the, the township website and, and Facebook, so people can know exactly what they can and can't bring.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you so much. Thanks, Jacob, for highlighting that we needed to show that information. Um, all right, we are on to old business. So, uh, consider approve the Green Mountain Dives Bridge R O W Appraisals. So are we looking for a motion? Jacob here?
Yes, John provided us at our last meeting, the right of ways for the permanent takings and the temporary takings. None of which are, are significant and I, I know that Missy reviewed that with us as well.
I think that should be drive bridge, isn't it? Not dock bridge?
I wasn't sure.
Would be interesting to see if anyone wanted to scuba dive into the creek, but.
Well, I was seeing more like a dive, like a dive bar, but that, that works too. So can we get a motion to approve, uh, the appraisals?
Nope, motion to approve.
All right, I'll give that one to Robert and second to Jacob. Any other comments, any questions from? Proud? No, I don't have any questions. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. All right. Next, formation of Smithfield Township Economic Development Committee. Um, on this note, I was supposed to get in touch with the, uh, Middle Smithfield Township. Director of Economic Development. Uh, I haven't had a chance to do that, so can I, uh, suggest that we table this until the next meeting?
So moved.
So, good idea.
Okay, motion to, to move to table from Jacob and was that a second from you, Robert? Sounds like, I think it was. All in favor of tabling?
Hi.
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, hold on, I didn't ask for any comments on table.
I had a comment about the previous thing about the appraisal, so I'll let you reach that.
All right, all in favor, eyes was done, eyes were taken, so that will be tabled. Um, I have a missed comment that I will entertain at this point for the. App, the Green Mountain Drive Bridge Appraisals.
Green Mountain Drive, to land ours, just me. Um, I just, I know, I just walked in, but this is what I wanted to hear was about this. And I guess I went up to get the paper and I wasn't paying attention. I heard you say about the appraisal, approved the appraisal. What was the appraisal for?
Uh.
Land of where the bridge is?
Yes, reconstruction of that bridge, uh, like we talked about last time. It's the same. Design and whatnot, but this, this is, uh, for the construction easements and also any changes to the physical characteristics of the bridge. And I can let John or, or Missy speak to that. I know Missy's not here tonight.
Yeah, well, what we determined. First of all, the township has a grant to repair the bridge, so we're moving forward with that. Uh, what we determined, uh, initially is that. Uh, based on any records that we could find, I mean, there's only a right of way. Across the bridge of thirty three feet wide, which is typical for township roads. Uh, portions of the bridge fall outside of that right of way, so. For the township to legitimately go in there and work, we should obtain additional right of way. Uh, so that that work can be done.
And so the property owners of that property. I mean.
Yeah, there's three, I think there's three affected property owners, if I recall correctly.
Okay, and you're trying to get right away from those people?
Yes.
And then the bridge, what are you gonna do to the bridge? I noticed about widening it for emergency vehicles.
No, we're not gonna, no, it's gonna, it's gonna remain, it's gonna be repaired in place, in the pond. Is what, what is going to happen.
It's not gonna be removed or?
No, one of the wing walls is probably gonna be removed and replaced, but it'll be replaced in kind. It, it looks like it's easier to tear it than to start over than try to repair it.
Cause it's been there over a hundred years.
Yes, yeah, but we're not changing the, the aesthetics or the historical significance of the bridge. Uh, it's gonna repair.
I, I heard some rumbles about it, so I just wanted to clarify. I'm sorry, I think, asked the support. You guys, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the other bridge is next on the agenda, the Post Office Bridge. But this is the barriers of the closure, so this is just a discussion piece. We received, uh, some feedback from John. Um, surrounding this bridge. Do you want to give us a quick summary?
Yeah.
Tom, so this is regarding Post Office Bridge?
Post, Post Office Bridge. Is similar in construction to the Green Mountain Drive Bridge. It's a, it's a stone arch bridge. Uh, it is losing stones in the arch and, uh, the wing walls and parapets of the bridge. And as a result, Penn Dot is inspecting it, uh, on a accelerated basis for them. And we met with their representative, uh, two weeks ago, I believe it was, and they wanted to bring us up to date on a report. And they are pushing us hard. When I say pushing us hard, that they are trying to. Get the township to move forward, forward with either repairing the bridge or closing the bridge. Uh, but at a minimum, if it's gonna remain open, they want to put additional. Uh, traffic deflectors on the bridge. So that it will do two things. One, uh, keep the traffic away from the parapets because they're not safe. And two, it will le, limit access to only one vehicle in each direction and that, which will. Therefore reduce the weight that can be on the bridge at any one particular time, because it does, it has been rated as a three ton limit. When we met with the engineer who had done the review, he made it sound like. The rope was coming to an end, if I can use that phrase. Uh, after I reviewed the report a little bit more carefully. Uh, I'm not suggesting that it, that it doesn't need repairs, it certainly does. But the report also indicated that it didn't appear to be any worse than it was the previous year. So, uh, I do think the township has to really consider their options. Uh, the options, as I understand them, would be to spend the necessary money to put those. Channeling devices in place for the traffic.
Is that like giant orange?
Yes, yes, okay. Uh, and at the same, if you're going to do that at the same time, you should really seek. Some grant money like we did for Green Mountain Drive to repair it, because it's probably gonna be a very similar expense to repair it. I was informed that. The, there's only one property owner on the other side and they are interested in owning the bridge. I think those discussions should be pursued.
Jacob, did you have an update on that part, uh, for Robert? An initial reach out, it happened, but we're having trouble getting a hold, is that correct for Julia?
Times and I, I think Julia has the, the latest because there was an attorney representing the interested property owner and Ron outlined to them. Uh, the process because they needed to petition us to vacate the road and then they would accept dedication at that point, but. I don't think anything new has taken place.
This is Ron speaking and I can say that as of January thirty one of this year. So it's, you know, a month ago, but not that long ago, I did get an email from the paralegal. To attorney Patrizio, who is representing the interested landowner and asked that. We see if we can get our wires connected, so there is still interest as far as I know as of January thirty one anyway.
I mean, it seems that it's the only single property that accesses this bridge, that accesses.
That's what I was reported. I haven't done independent research, that's what I was told.
That, so it's effectively driveway.
Correct, they bought out their neighbors.
Pretty much.
They own all the parcels.
But it's multiple parcels?
Yes.
Well, see, there's not, there's nothing for us to do until we hear more from this lawyer who represents them. Obviously, if we could, if we get somebody to take it, I think we'd, uh, love to get rid of it since it doesn't go anywhere except to their property.
And then once we give it to them, because it's, it's limited to being a driveway, they're not, effectively, they're not required to meet Penn Dot requirements.
Right.
Fair.
Uh, your, your, your last option, which is. Pretty strong option, not recommending it, but you could close the bridge if you were. pretty strong option, not recommending it, but you could close the bridge if you're worried about liabilities, but then you've got a you've got a certain situation on your hand, that you have a property owner that can't get either in or out of their property. But.
What's a Penn Dot do if we don't do anything?
I asked that question, they might take it upon themselves to close the bridge, I was informed that they have done that in a couple other occasions.
Ron, did you say you're waiting for something back from them, or you've you've heard interest and that that was it? Is there anything that we can do to push back and say, hey, let's let's move things things along?
Well, we certainly can, and I intend to do some pushback, and looking at my folder, Julia, back in November of last year, sent an email out to the representative for the property owner and said touching base, are you still interested in taking over, et cetera, et cetera? And I had not seen anything coming back, except again for that email of January thirty-one, so I intend to.
I think we sent several iterations of that Penn Dot inspection, if I'm not mistaken.
Did we? Okay.
If we didn't specifically ask for feedback or comment, they might not have taken it upon themselves to do that, so maybe we can just have Ron reach out to the to the attorney and say, we're keen to move this along, and then maybe highlight that there's a risk that the road might have to be closed if if that doesn't happen.
Which is true.
Do we have to make a motion to do that? Now?
No.
Okay. Great. All right, any comments from anyone on this, on the postal post office bridge? Anybody else? No? Okay, you guys okay with us moving along? Okay. That is it for old business, let's move on to new business, discussion on the Chikitis sketch plan. Right, presentation.
My name is Nate Euler with Arcare Hess, we prepared a sketch plan for the Nancy Chikitis estate for a conservation subdivision, we've been to the planning commission and had a good discussion with the planning commission. But ultimately, first of all, this is probably the first conservation subdivision that's come through the township. So we're trying to get through those ordinances and and understand that it does allow the township, it allows the applicant to work with the township on some flexibility. So we did want to come to the supervisors and make this presentation as well. I know Supervisor Alvaro was actually on the planning commission when that discussion happened.
Already heard this presentation.
And I believe the supervisors may have been in the in the audience, but we I think they were, we wanted to to bring this because there will be some there'll be a little more input in this in this project than the standard subdivision. Alice Lenick is the executive of the family property, and so Alice is here.
Where is this little thing?
And so this property is seventeen point five acres located on Franklin Hill Road. Right now on this property, there are currently two houses, one located here, and one located back here, there's a driveway. This is an existing driveway that comes back there, the other house is located off of this Hidden Hidden Valley Drive driveway. And we're proposing to create five lots, three new lots, and two lots that will be created for the existing homes. Doing this in accordance with the conservation subdivision. So the areas in green are proposed to remain because the open space, common open space for the lot. The ordinance allows for a smaller lot down to forty thousand square feet, it allows for flexibility in some of the lot dimensions, flexibility on the lot depth, lot width. Again, what we're trying to do is match the existing features on the site. And the real goal is to not have your traditional subdivision, which would be take advantage of the existing road frontage, and just divide the lots off with the existing, so all you see from the road frontage would be a line of houses and get the houses back further, keep the open space, there's a wetland over here that we preserve. That's the general goal of our of our proposal. It will require some flexibility, again, as we said, with the ordinance zoning ordinance allows for flexible lot depth, as long as we meet that middle of the lot area dimensions. On the road, we're asking, there's an alternate turnaround at the end, there will be a T turnaround rather than a big, large, round cul-de-sac. We have looked at this, this can get a fire truck around, so that we we feel we meet that requirement, any trucks that will be coming single unit trucks that will come back for deliveries. And we would be asking for some flexibility on the road design. I believe the way the ordinance can be interpreted now, that we would have to have a full twenty foot, twenty-six foot wide road, I think it was, with shoulders and pavement. And we would be asking for flexibility to have a gravel road of a lesser width that would be adequate to serve these homes back here. Not a roadway that would be for, you know, the same standard as for a subdivision that had many homes there. So that's the quick description. We're open to any comments you have, this is just a sketch plan, it's encouraged in your ordinance to get as much input. We're trying to make the decision that we can proceed, we do want to proceed with the conservation subdivision, rather than go with the standard, so any information or comments we can get at this point are appreciated to help us make that decision and and move forward with the next steps.
Nate, excuse me, I I walked the area with John Tressler about a month ago. Nothing to do with this property, but I think the neighboring property, and John can give more information than I have. Has one which was the Franklin Hill Albert Lane Development, where there have been serious concerns by neighbors about the groundwater, especially because it's all rock up there. And John, can you speak to anything that has to do with the Chikitis property that's next to where we were looking?
The only thing I think a lot of the water from the subdivision across the road is flowing parallel to Franklin Hill, so not too much is coming across the road, although some is going to be diverted across the road, and easement is going to be required. I think that water is headed towards the wetlands. And it's probably the correct place for it to go, that's where it's going now. But that would be the, really the only comment that I would have with respect to that that subdivision, I think I think the two could work together really well.
Do we need any any permission from the owner of the wetlands?
No, not the, the owner of the other subdivision is going to have to meet the requirements of our stormwater management ordinance, which is going to limit the rate of the water going into the wetlands. You certainly don't want to eliminate water going to the wetlands, because they need water by definition. So I I think we're fine. The only thing that I'm pointing out is, I think at some point that owner should be talking to these people about that easement.
They could contact me on Sunday.
Oh, okay.
Just to to put in my perspective, I, we're talking about these properties, you know, moving together somewhat synonymously, although Franklin Hill looks like it's going to take quite a bit longer. I, I'm a big fan of the flexibility that the conservation subdivision adds. But I I honestly think that the road should be upgraded to a, you know, public standard, I think that the benefit of keeping, you know, a private road right now is is great, but eventually you're gonna have neighbors that don't agree, and the only solution is going to be to have the township considering accepting dedication, I would rather that the applicant develop the road now and offer it for dedication rather than have to go fix this like we do with every other development later on.
You're here.
I was I was gonna raise a similar point, from my recollection, this was the main sticking point of the planning commission meeting was the road. I don't even know, is that something that can, is a variance required, or can you give a variance?
No, you can give a waiver.
A waiver, sorry.
Yes, you can give a waiver on the design. And there might be some consideration, and I'm just throwing this out here, I don't get a vote. There there could possibly be some consideration as to the width, but I think my comment at the planning commission meeting was the same thing about the road, I really think it should be a hard surface. I support the rest of the subdivision, I mean, I I think it's I think it's well thought out, what they're trying to do, and I think it's gonna have less noticeable impact, as people are traveling Franklin Hill Road, so I think from all that, they've accomplished what this type of subdivision plan is supposed to accomplish, but I do believe the road should be looked at with respect to our minimum road standards, maybe there's a little bit of room to work with that, but that's certainly where it should start.
Good question, lot, how's lot one access the road? Is there, is there a drive there? On there, okay.
So there's four lots here.
The reason for the requirement of the township road is because it's three or more properties, or what's the number that hits? I don't remember.
I I believe four could be, so there's a bit of a perk in your ordinance, and help me out, Alice, I know we that if this was a four lot subdivision or minor subdivision, we could have a private access street. But because, you know, this is a bit unique in that we have two houses on one property, and all four of those houses are using the proposed driveway. So the ordinance I, John has interpreted it, and I think that's the way it reads, that this would be a major subdivision, then you can't have this kind of a a number of things. But I think those requirements are really written before the conservation subdivision ordinance was written, so you know, so the challenge for us is that obviously there there's an improvement cost here. And that improvement cost may make the conservation subdivision not viable, I mean, that that's what we're wrestling with. Now, obviously.
Yeah, it's way more expensive to pay.
It's way more expensive to pay, our intention is to have an agreement with the new stormwater manager, there would be a stormwater manager facility, they need to manage that. They need to manage the open space, so I think the road is similar to that, there have to be strong agreements, we recognize that. But, you know, not only will they have to manage the road, just like with these new projects and NPDS permits, there is a pretty elaborate agreement and notification that when they buy a lot, that that's part of the part of the requirement to to be an owner here. And the real goal is, if you've been back here, there's a little drive back here, there's a barn back here. And and these houses back here, there are only four lots on these, I think at the planning commission, we talked that many people here have the same situation on gravel driveways, and I think there was less, you know, the the discussion was more open to the accepting gravel, maybe with the proper width or two, you know, to make sure the cars can pass on the way back. So that's what we're really wrestling with, we appreciate your comments right up front, because this is a decision we need to make as to whether, is it viable with the requirement to pave that road to to make the numbers work to this design.
I I think I I personally really like to know if it is four, if we only allow four for a private, because the reality is, this is just for, even though it's five lots, it is that driveway only.
It's only certain four, and I can't remember, I looked at it a couple of two months ago, but I believe believe it requires a private access, and I believe there's minimum street requirements for that. Do you have my letter there, Nate?
That shouldn't be it. I got three copies up here.
Maybe that's why I don't have any.
Yeah, if you have that part.
I I think this related to a conservation subdivision cannot be considered a minor subdivision. Where a minor subdivision could allow a private access street versus a minor local road. And I think that was the kind of dilemma we were in. Even though we were only really creating three new lots, we have and and no access here. It was because of the determination of a major subdivision, which didn't allow the private access street with a lesser improvement standard. This is the, on the page four of six. Or more, and I don't think that we specifically saw the required improvement for a private access street with the you you refer to appendix B, a local slash minor road is required to be improved with twenty-six foot wide, adding a right of way width of fifty feet.
Yeah, just just quickly reviewing my letter, if I can summarize, and you can correct me if you you think I'm misremembering Nate, but I believe that because there are five lots, we we believe it is a major subdivision, and then because it's a major subdivision, then a street, regardless of how many lots that street is serving, it's gotta be designed to a local street. I think I think that's how we got to where we were.
I think that's correct, and just, but to have a conservation subdivision, you have to have five lots, so it's kind of, again, I think there's some some things that were as you add ordinance, we have to work through these through these these issues, but it really comes down to you know, if the supervisor would support a a gravel road, I think there was some I know John stated his position on it, but some of the planning commission members, I think, are more familiar with that kind of setup, because that's the type of roads they live on. And again, it's, I mean, if you can imagine, you know, Franklin Hill Road is a twenty-six foot wide. So you're actually, you know, proposing to make more of an improvement for a street to access four lots.
That's that's why I said I think there should be some, there could easily be some discussion about the required width of the road.
Franklin, but Franklin Hill paid up, right?
And again, I don't know if you know this, Nate, I don't have this saddle with me, I don't know what the refunds are for the construction of a private access street. Do you know that?
I don't think the ordinance is very specific about this.
Okay.
I think that was a question we had asked before, and I think I don't think the ordinance is very clear.
Like, I could just say this for for clarification, I I'm not gonna vote to to grant a waiver to allow a gravel road, I don't think it makes any sense, I appreciate, you know, the the offer, you know, to do that, I think conservation subdivision is great, but I I don't think it makes sense going forward, and I I live over there, I'm familiar with you know, the the property I live on, Deerfield, and I think that to 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 not pave a road that's gonna serve, you know, that many homes is 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 kind of irresponsible. And I think in the long term, the municipality is gonna be the one that has to deal with it, because some judge or whomever is not going to uphold the agreements, that they're they're very much not clear. And they don't really offer any anything, you know, for remedies.
Okay.
Well, we certainly would work with our attorney on making a very clear agreement. We actually have had an opportunity for the estate attorney to review a road agreement previously. And, you know, it has teeth, and it allows to lean on property owners if they don't pay. It's in everyone's interest on a road like that to keep it in good shape. So I don't, you know, for example, Hidden Valley Drive, where the lot one that road similarly is not particularly steep. It is gravel. And it's well maintained, all of the property owners ship in. Actually, a lot of them do do work on.
I think one of your challenges is that we're I think so many of the things that are on the supervisor's plates right now are related to private roads that are having issues, so it's a little bit of a sticking point right now, so it'd be a little bit maybe irresponsible of us to go ahead and approve something for which, right now, we're dealing with challenges, I mean, it's not exactly the same situation here, obviously, but I think for that reason, it's a little bit of a sticking point, I do have a quick question, I will get to Paul to comment in one second. Is there a reason why you don't do a subdivision for that lot one first? And then just do a second subdivision for the other pieces?
Yes, there is, there's required acreage. And there's also a required percentage of common land for the conservation subdivision.
And and I think your ordinance, I think has some learning to preclude that, that says they start counting the number of lots as of the date of the order, so I think the ordinance has a a building definition there to try to preclude that. And and you need five lots by your ordinance to do a conservation subdivision. So it's kind of a, we're kind of in a circle there, but.
But you then only have four, yeah, okay.
Then we couldn't do a conservation subdivision by the order, so.
I mean, I don't know if I feel quite so strongly on this issue as Jacob does, and I know my property has three houses that access a little gravel gravel drive, and I would hate to pave it, because I think it's part of the charm of it. But it's a little bit more than that, it's a lot longer too, so that's that's part of it. It's a little bit more than that. It's a lot longer too. So that's, that's part of it.
Compared where you live, Michael, on a, you know, a small suburban. Street where you do have, you know, pretty clear access versus over here. You know, where it's, it's practically a meadow with a dirt road where Forrest Gump ran, you know, away throwing rocks at him. I think that there's, there's a substantial difference.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I haven't walked you out there.
And just to be clear, we're proposing improvements. We're not proposing leaving it as it is, but uh I appreciate your comments.
All right, I'll take public comment. If that okay supervisors, can I take a public comment now? Okay, I'm outside now. All right, here first, yes.
My name is Jeanne Turn, and I have uh, I guess, two questions or, and a comment. One is about the road. If you do pave it, you're gonna have a more impermeable surface. Stormwater runoff and. So to me, in that area, because we're down on Gap You Drive, and it seems like anytime you have impermeable surfaces. And you change the, the stormwater, it just affects like everything. Um. And the other question, so you are gonna have a, a stormwater plan?
Yes, we'll have to have a full, uh, we have a concept now, which would be a stormwater basin here. To collect the water off the road and manage it, and then produce it into the well. So we will, regardless of whether we paved or not, we will be required to have that.
Well, with the Franklin Hill development, their, their stormwater plan calls for enlarging the culvert right there by Albert Lane. So does your plan have to take into account the added? Stormwater runoff? That they're going to be adding to your property?
So my understanding is that they're managing, uh, and I haven't reviewed the calculations, but they would be responsible for managing the. Stormwater on their side of the road. Uh, it would be uh large, and I guess they're making the provisions to get it from the road to the wetland. So I, I don't think that that would change off the look of that, but I, I don't think that. But my understanding.
What Nate is saying is correct. They, they have to manage their water. Uh, so that the rate is no greater than what it is today. Uh, so they will be responsible for managing on their side. Uh, Nate and his plan are responsible for their side. The reason for the improvements across Franklin Hill Road to just to better convey that water across. Across Franklin Hill Road. It's not to allow for an increase.
Oh, okay. But I have the impression that because they were enlarging it.
We are enlarging the pipe, but the pipe's on the sides anyway, but the, the rate that the water is going to come across. Will not be any greater. It'll just be handled more efficiently in a more properly sized pipe.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Uh, yes.
I'm the president of the Howling Association. And I have a question. Is this a private development? I'm assuming this is.
Private property, it's not a development.
Okay, but there's gonna be four homes, four lots, four homes in there?
Twelve or five. Two existing houses now and three lots for the construction of new.
Okay, so basically it is gonna be pretty much a private.
It's not the same as a PRD at all.
Okay.
It, it'd be a private, right, I mean. It's not, it's not really the same. It's individual lots, they just share the road. They own the, the road together effectively.
So then why would the township consider coming in and paving the road? And would you be actually taking possession of it? You would be, they would be paving.
That's why they don't wanna do it, because it's gonna be expensive, I mean.
We're not proposing to dedicate the road to the township.
Okay, that was my question, because um I know that you guys are aware of the situation with the Howling. We had five roads that the township. Did not take over, and you, you know, that would be starting a precedence.
Typically, uh, townships won't take over a road unless it already meets township standards.
Okay.
So it's gotta meet township standards first, and then we take it over and maintain it. That's typically.
Okay, thank you.
No? Agressed? So we don't need to take any action. We've gotten some.
No, we appreciate your feedback and uh. Thanks for hearing us. Anything else else, do you have any?
Barometer of the whole board.
Well, I think we've got.
I mean, I can tell you, my, my personal feeling is, I think you probably need to do something. It's, I, I, I wouldn't be a favor of just a blanket waiver either. Um, I personally don't think that the paving is critical, but I think you have, that's my personal view, which is different from Jacob's. Um, I don't. I don't have a problem with dirt roads. But I. I don't know if Robert wants to opine or not.
No, dusty roads are the only thing I don't like.
Doesn't like dusty roads. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right, I'm gonna move on. Um. So we're gonna discuss the draft public road safety ordinance. Very fitting.
Mister uh acting chairman, I'd rather we just postpone this. Um, I've had some. Some more thoughts on a different way to attack this, and also it would be easier to discuss if we were all in attendance, so. I'd like to either put this on the next agenda or the one following that. It's not urgent at this point.
Yeah, I have a motion to table this um discussion.
Do you wanna do uh March twenty-seventh since the thirteenth is going to be the healthy minds conditional use?
Yeah, thirteenth, we're gonna be here late. So motion to table till the twenty-seventh, Robert, is that what that was?
Motion to table the twenty, the twenty-seventh, was that?
Yeah.
Yep. Second.
Second. All right, and I'm, I'll agree largely because there's some comments I have and some possible concerns I have, but. So let's have a nice in-depth conversation on March twenty-seventh. All uh. I'm gonna table, do I have to take, uh, help me out. I'm sorry, I'm still learning here. Do I need to get comments on the public?
Before you make any.
Even tabling, okay. Any comments on? The motion to table this until the next, till March twenty-seventh? No? Thank you. All right, uh, all in favor? Table it. Aye? All right. Tables. Next, discuss LSA grant applications. Take care, guys. Uh, is this yours, Robert, or? LSAs are. What do they stand for, Jacob?
Local share account.
Um, the reason this is on the agenda is because the Monroe County LSA grant typically opens. They haven't officially announced it yet, but every year it's July first through September thirtieth. Um, and generally right about now is when uh we start preparing our grant application for that. Um, there have been some discussions on what might be a good idea or not to apply for. Um, and both Alex and I wanted to get a bead on where we need to focus our resources for this. Um. This was levied as a possible. If we need to look at funding Post Office Bridge, we can do that. Um, possibly looking at funds to uh create a community center, possibly looking at property acquisition. Uh, we're just looking for direction from the board where we need to go with this.
Mister chairman, again, I, I think this is a much longer discussion, and it would be better if we're all there, so I think we should postpone this. And we've got plenty of time, because it's not till midsummer that we have to make applications here.
Okay, can I just, just before we, we table it, Jacob, you actually are involved in. In, you know, in your job, in uh these sorts of grant applications. Can you give us ten seconds on the type of projects that are more likely to be funded, so we can think about it before the next meeting?
Sure, uh, I can say, because I do these for State Rep Madden. Uh, typically, your sweet spot application is about a hundred thousand dollars. There is no uh. Match requirement, although it's always viewed upon as a uh friendly enticement to the Commonwealth. Legislators generally wanna see projects that are public improvements. Uh, be it some sort of park, infrastructure, something uh community oriented, historic, et cetera. So that, that's the type of thing that that's going to get, you know, not typical, it, it can't fund operations or maintenance. But it can fund restoration and do new construction.
And would you say it's more, it's better for improvement over acquisition, or does it depend?
For sure, un- unless it's like a, a, a huge, uh, you know, cultural thing, uh, you know, it's gonna be unlikely. Especially because the, the top ask, I think, is a million dollars. So typically, these, these are smaller projects. I can give you recent examples of. Um. Sewer expansion, uh. Uh, the Smithfield Sewer Authority got that grant from Rep Probst. Uh, Rep Madden has given uh grants for purchase of new uh ambulances and P two-five radios, things like that.
Okay. All right, great. That's good information to think about. Um. All right, I think I have a motion from uh Robert to table this. Do I have a second motion? All second to a motion to table. Um, a- any other comments from anybody on tabling this point till March twenty-seventh? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, table till March twenty-seventh. You got that? The agenda, okay. All right, next, uh, this is a consideration uh. Item. Shawnee Fire Company radio request. Julia, do you wanna give a little bit of background on this?
Sure, um, so our emergency uh center is in the process of upgrading to P two-five radios. Um, as such, they put out a basically heads up to all of our emergency service providers that they were going to need to get these radios. In order to come into compliance and make sure that we were all still on the same system.
This is back in a while.
Ooh, it's probably been two years now, I think, since this started, maybe more.
Okay.
Um, when this was all coming to a head, uh, the radios are obviously very expensive, because it's not just the radios. That everyone needs to carry with them. It's outfitting all of the vehicles as well. Um, so when we had been approached by all of our fire companies. Um, with concerns over being able to afford this, uh, as well as our EMS providers. So Middle Smithfield, Smithfield and Price, um, and to a degree, and Delaware Water Gap. Uh, because we entered, uh, we, we share Marshals Creek Fire Company, Shawnee Fire Company, et cetera. Uh, had spoken about how we were going to help fund this cost. At the end of the day, uh, a third of the cost of their radios would be for, uh, borne by the fire company. A third was going to be covered by Monroe County, and the townships were going to split the remaining third among themselves. Um, with Shawnee Fire Company, the split was originally uh slated to be sixty percent Middle Smithfield. Uh, excuse me, twenty percent Middle Smithfield, seventy percent Smithfield, and ten percent Delaware Water Gap. Uh, Delaware Water Gap has been enabled to provide those funds to Shawnee Fire Company. So Shawnee Fire Company has reached out to us and Middle Smithfield Township to see if we would be able to proportionately uh. Cover those funds based on this. Um, this comes out to just under forty-five hundred dollars for the township.
And Delaware Water Gap's not doing that largely because Shawnee Fire Company does not serve Delaware Water Gap.
They do.
They do?
It's dual dispatch. It's not primary service.
Right, yeah, sorry. It's uh, what are they called? Shared, shared.
Six AM, six PM, Monday through Friday.
Okay. But not prime, not the primary.
Right, dual dispatch. It's not mutual aid. It's a little bit different.
Okay. Um, so this is a new request for our, basically a new split?
Uh, an additional split. The township has already contributed the seventy percent to them. We cut that check a long time ago, and that's good. They're asking for those additional funds to cover what uh Delaware Water Gap broke.
A portion of it, right?
A portion of it.
The idea is, uh, there's gonna be, there's a request from Middle Smithfield for their. Smaller portion, fifteen hundred is expected, and we're four thousand five hundred, or four thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Um, I guess we should start with a motion to approve it. Uh, um. Does anyone wanna make a motion to uh approve that, and then we can?
I moved.
Jacob's motions. You want a second? You want a second?
Second.
All right, so let's discuss. Uh. Jacob, you seem to know more about this than I do. Any, any concerns, thoughts?
I don't necessarily have any concerns, uh, so much as my question would be, if we approve this, can we then? Uh, reimburse ourselves from the, the fire tax that we're going to be uh collecting? I mean, it's, it's, you know, not, nothing, but it's also not that significant in the scheme of things, but I would like to. You know, make sure that we're satisfying both of those, those requests. Uh, we know that Shawnee needs it, but at the same time, I don't want to. Uh, you know, just dig ourselves into a hole.
Yeah.
Jacob, this, this is wrong.
Yep.
Is this forty-nine or forty-four hundred dollars? This is the share that Delaware Water Gap. I won't say doesn't wanna pay. I don't wanna make it sound that way, but that, that's the Delaware Water Gap share, because the townships already paid its share.
Correct.
And the proposal to, to have that amount, you know, paid by us, and then I guess, Michael said, about fifteen hundred dollars to Middle Smithfield.
And. With respect to the share that the township generally gives itself, is that reimbursed from your fire tax account or not?
No, this is, this is totally new. Uh, at the time that we did this, we didn't have a fire tax levied.
Okay. I just wanted to see if there was some kind of. Customer practice with respect to this. I mean, if it's used for the purposes of that fire tax, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but. You know, if it's used for the purposes of that fire tax, I don't see why you can't reimburse yourself. When I say yourself to township, even its own, even i- it's own donation.
That's fair. Okay, I, I have no issue with, with, with this.
I mean, a- again, I can't say that for sure, because I don't know exactly what the purpose of the tax are. If it says it's for, you know, apparatus, and it's for. And, and this money is for things that are not apparatus. That's different, but it seems to me it is. It's a radio request.
Well, I guess I'd also say, this board has yet to act on a specific plan for how. Those taxes will be paid out to um the different car companies. I know I've seen. Some initial calculations on how it could be. Um. Maybe at a minimum, this shows good faith to. Shawnee Fire Company. Um. I know they're, they'd seen initial draft and weren't thrilled with the way we were doing the calculations, even though I think we all agree it was a fair calculation. Again, something that has not been approved yet, but is in draft form, so.
I'm with you, Mike.
Okay. Any other questions? And I guess, again, this. Maybe it can also be done with the caveat that um. Middle Smithfields has to come up, not, doesn't necessarily have to come up with the other fifteen hundred, but they shouldn't come back to us for the fifteen hundred. As, as well, if Middle Smithfield says no. Any, any comments, yeah?
And when uh do they expect these radios to go on the service?
They're already in service.
They are in service? They're using them now?
Yes.
I mean, this was, this had come up at a fire company meeting that, you know, this was all promised. They never got this money. Um.
Yeah, I just wasn't aware that that was.
Okay.
Yeah, um, Marshall's Creek. Uh, their invoice is dated August of twenty twenty-two, and Shawnee's is dated December of twenty twenty-two. So they, they've like purchased this over a year ago at this.
If, if I'm not mistaken, all of these are, are active radios, but I, the, the county has not yet finished, or the, not the county, sorry, the, the. Uh, Monroe County Emergency Center has not yet upgraded the infrastructure across the county for it yet, because I know they have seven million dollar shortfall. Uh, cover on that before that happens.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more comments, so we have a motion on the table um to approve the. Uh, payment of four thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-one cents to Shawnee Fire Company for. Um, these radios that were purchased, um. Which is in addition to the funds already provided. Uh, that motion is seconded as on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, no opposed. All right, perfect. Let us move on. Uh, PMBB match commitment letter. This is yours, right?
Yep. We're submitting a grant to the Volcom Mountain Visitors Bureau for um. The revitalization of the disc golf course at Represen. Revitalization of the golf, um disc golf course at River's Edge, and also the um addition of barbecue um grills with an eighty-eight accessible section in, in brick form for um for Mini-Sink Park and also for Waterfront Park.
And do we actually, didn't we actually make an action on this already here?
I think that was the one for nature commitment letter.
Okay, but it was also for the, for barbecues too, right?
That was for a trash disposal receptacle, which we were granted that.
Oh, we, we got that. Okay, I'm sorry. Uh.
And this, as I understand, is a budget expense if you, if you move forward for this purpose.
Uh hear a motion in a second before we discuss.
Make a motion.
Second.
And a motion, just so I'm clear, the motion is to send this funding commitment letter?
It would be to approve the funding commitment letter.
Gotcha. Alright. Any discussion?
I would just point one other thing out. Middle Smithfield Township is, is in favor of this, provided us with a letter before, and also for um providing an in-kind donation of nine nets for the disc golf course, so very helpful.
Nine what?
Nine of the metal nets for the disc golf.
Yep. Is that part of this in-kind, that's in this letter? Two thousand dollars in kind?
No.
No, that's labor.
That's, yeah, that's our side of it.
Okay. Alright. Any questions from? Yeah.
Can you just clarify the, the pathways and are they gonna be on the disc golf course or at Mini-Sink Park? And Markman Park?
The pathways will be on Ri- at River's Edge Park, the bike park.
Uh-huh.
They've been in a state of disrepair for, as I understand, at least five or six years now, and no longer functional for disc golf. So we will be revitalizing the nine ball golf course on that property, uh which is directly across from Mini-Sink, so.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just to clarify. Thank you for the question.
So you're gonna revitalize the, 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 the pathways through the, the disc golf course?
What was the disc golf course? It's no longer the disc golf, right?
Yeah, it's no, it, it, the infrastructure doesn't exist anymore.
But it's gonna be the golf course after you're done, and then barbecues at Mini-Sink Park?
Mini-Sink Park and also here at Waterfront.
Okay, where are the, where are they gonna be at Mini-Sink Park?
If you go to Mini-Sink Park and you go all the way to the end near the river, and you look on the left, there's like a kind of a makeshift fire pit that people use currently. One will be there, and then there's another one proposed on the other, on the left-hand side. If you're in that same situation of the uh the the plane, there'll be two there. It's a high-volume park, so we feel that'd be appropriate and highly utilized there, and then one will be there at Waterfront.
Well, high, high volume because of the soccer fields.
And a lot of visitors that go in there and go down to the River's Edge and.
Yeah. Now, is that open still on legal? Cuz I know during the pandemic, people were trashing it, and at one point it was closed. On legal, is that still the case?
Correct. No, it, 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 it's very much open, and we've been utilizing the Monterey County Constable's uh task force uh to keep the peace over there. It's a little bit cheaper and more effective than the, the private security we had before.
We have effective garbage there now?
Yeah, garbage is very effective. We have the uh.
I know, payback during COVID as well, it was like garbage was thrown everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Nope, Ken, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. That was everyone, right? No opposed?
Correct.
Alright, uh next, consider appointment of members of the Environmental Advisory Council. Um. Wanna take this on again?
I can give a summary for the board?
Yes, please.
That we've received a number of letters of interest from residents of Smithfield Township listed on your agenda. The EAC has not been functional for a good number of years, and so the board, if they like to move on this, would appoint these members of the EAC for those terms. So that there's a stagger term for each one of them. That way, there's a, there're roughly a third become up a renewal each year. And the EAC, the duties of the EAC are outlined in the ordinance that the township has.
This group's gonna meet monthly?
Yes, the group would meet once monthly. The proposed um days, the third Tuesday of the month at seven PM here at the township building. That's how the board would like to go, and of course, you will.
I'm on, I'm on the list.
Yes, you are on the list, so.
Okay. Um. Can I hear a motion to accept the?
Motion to.
Point.
I'll, I'll second. Uh I just wanna add two discussion points. One, uh when I made the agenda, I erroneously listed the first uh term as January second, twenty twenty-seven, supposed to reflect January fourth, cuz all of these dates are co-terminous uh with the reorganization dates of the Board of Supervisors, just like our, our planning commission is. And we also have uh one vacancy, and I think we'd like to have a little more diversity and, and, and hopefully find a good person for, for that last spot.
They're all men right now, right?
No.
No.
Oh, so I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay, cats, either way.
Could've been either way, that's right. Well, we still want more diversity out there.
I, I would point out, Mr. Chairman, that we actually don't like to find diversity, but we have a lot of different professional backgrounds on the committee, which is excellent, I feel, for the township in general. And, you know, I just wanna point that out.
Yep. And then all the, all of the dates are supposed to be one-four, is that right, Jacob?
Uh just, uh no, uh cuz it's the first Monday in January each, each year, so uh just the, the first one there should reflect one-four, just like the, the two that follow it.
But Mitch would be one-five, twenty twenty-six?
Correct.
And one-six, oh, because that's the first. Oh, you did your research, got it. Okay. Uh. So it's Brett Carright, Pat Owens, Eric White, Mitch Boyer, planning commission member James Manette. Um myself, Michael Albert, supervisor, and then one vacancy still. Any questions? Oh.
It's not a question.
Yeah.
I just wanna say, uh I'm Pat Owens, and I'm going to get.
Sorry, Pat.
Yeah, Pat, female.
Hi, Pat.
And I also uh attended a meeting, a statewide meeting of put on by the, what is the uh blanket or the head organization? Who is the woman?
Uh we can serve PA.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can just give a little background. We invited all the potential members um to this annual event over the weekend. It was an excellent event, a lot of interesting presentations.
Well, that was the point I was gonna make. Uh I was impressed with what's being done across the state, and I think it's gonna be very challenging for us to step up and do something, so I'm excited about it.
That's awesome. Thanks, Pat. Well, I, I must say, I I wanted to attend. I was in a PSATs training onboarding session all day in Allentown for this job right here, so I was unfortunately unable to to attend, but that's exciting to hear that it went well. Any, there was another comp, yeah.
Um I have a question about the expiration dates. You'd said they were roughly a third, a third, a third, um but they're not. So um you have uh
Alright, so.
Aside from the township representation, which both expire in twenty-five, the vacant is twenty-five. One term expires in twenty-six, and then three expire in twenty-seven, so that's not a third.
Was Eric supposed to be twenty, twenty-six, Jacob?
I'd have to look at what Alex sent. All I did was add dates to the uh, to what Alex sent, but if I look at.
It's the date that we're, we're asking about.
Yeah.
It would be probably appropriate to change that one term to twenty twenty-six, if you.
If Pat wants to stick around to twenty twenty-seven, yes? Sounds like she's keen. So Eric, Eric goes to twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, let me just make sure, cuz I wanted to see, cuz Alex sent us.
One-five, twenty twenty-six.
Huh, yeah, no, that, that's fine.
Yeah. Any other questions on?
When did you say they were gonna be at Tuesday?
Tuesday, seven PM, third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday.
Seven PM.
Like to nominate Joanne Morris. Second. Third Tuesday.
What is the mechanism for um appointing? I guess we could point that here, yeah?
Yep, at this meeting tonight, you make, you basically the motions to make those appointments essentially.
And with the last one.
And the last one, that's.
That's entirely up to the board.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't know. I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know who expressed interest and who was there and.
No, we can, uh to solicit, you know, since we don't have this one figured out.
Not that I don't want.
Do that by the twenty-seventh.
All of this, uh I wanna make sure that we have, uh understand who were all the nominees were, why there's a vacancy there, and all that sort of thing. We can always appoint at the next meeting, which is on March. Thirteenth.
Yeah, I, I'd recommend appointing those one, two, three, four, five, six members and leaving that one vacant for now, and continuing to accept letters of interest. So if someone's interested, just send me an email. That's just a recommendation you can go.
Oh, yeah, we did need, we do need a letter, so of interest.
Alex at Smithfield dot com. Is that what it is?
Smithfield Township dot com.
Smithfield Township.
Yeah, we're all, we're all first name at Smithfield Township dot com. Now, don't go sending me a bunch of emails. Alright, uh so the uh can we have a revised motion for the slate as presented, but with the dates updated for Brett Carright to one-four twenty twenty-seven, and Eric White to one-five twenty twenty-six?
I'll make it.
Okay, well, uh Robert and then Jacob, any final discussion on this point? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, no opposed. We've got our group. One more thing for me, I love that. Um lastly, uh we want to schedule a work session on chapter twenty-seven reforms of residential uses, hotel uses, definitions, parking, um. Who put this on? Is this yours, Robert?
Uh I, I put it on, uh generally because we have a couple of uh recent uh events that, that inform the discussion on the differences between the, the various hotel uses and how some are, are fairly practical while others seem somewhat arbitrary. There's different acreage requirements, not that we're trying to arbitrarily reduce them, just the same way that they arbitrarily exist, uh but I know that we wanted to have a more formal discussion on some of those things. The residential uses, I know we were talking about that with respect to the ED zone, but also making sure that there's uh sufficient screening in place. Um I think we all agree that there's way too much parking uh in, in many areas, and then uh definitions broadly need some updating because you can see the differences between the definitions and supplementary regulations. So I wanted to have the board pick a date at which we can aim to have a, you know, an unencumbered ninety minutes on, on just those topics.
Work session, would that include the planning commission?
Um I don't mind if it's a joint session. I just don't want it to be uh. I want a, a majority of both to be able to make it if we can, but with, with the aim that it's, it's gonna be a continuing thing.
And yeah, and this goes along with some comments I made to Julia as well about just a lot of definitions need tweaking. Maybe rent, there's an inn, there's a hotel, there's a resort, they're all kinda similar, but a little different. We need to make sure they're clearly spelled out. Um so let's schedule a session. We get our calendars open? Is that how this works?
That is fine on my end. I think it's ideal to start probably around like four, four-thirty, just because I know the availability outside of our regular meetings. Uh especially for our planning commission volunteers is, is a little uh more strict.
Do we wanna keep it on as a, a Wednesday? Like, do you wanna do like the twentieth of March? Cuz we are, it's in between our two Wednesdays?
That would be fine on my calendar.
Looks good to me.
Is that enough time to advertise?
Yes.
They are public?
And the board should know the twentieth uh of March, the third Wednesday, is when Upper Mount Bethel Township Planning Commission meets, so I would not be available.
I don't know that we need legal there for.
And that's, that's what I was just gonna say. You may not need me there anyway, so.
What time does Upper Mount Bethel meet, Ron?
Seven.
Okay.
Do you think we should have counsel there?
No, it's okay. If, if we determine as it gets closer, I don't mind.
If, if you're starting at, let's say, four, well, then I can hang around till at least six-thirty or so, and then can take off to Mount Bethel. That gives the, the township here two and a half hours to discuss this. I'm not saying you start at four, but you know, uh if you, even if you start at five, I can be here for like an hour and a half.
I would say started at four, uh with Ron has to leave, um look, this may take several sessions, who knows? But let's give it a try, just starting it at four on the twentieth, see where it goes for ninety minutes.
And I, I, can I argue that I don't think we need Ron um for the first session? I agree with you, Robert, that there's gonna be multiple sessions, and I think the first one, we're gonna be spitballing, we're gonna be looking at definitions. Um we're gonna be discussing and then bring him for the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, and then that's fine with me, that, that I have no problem with that.
Yeah, and, and I wanna aim to, to have some specific questions we want answered that day, because I, what I've noticed when we've had these types of joint sessions in the past, is they tend to be two hours of what each individual person likes, and that's not necessarily informative as to what is going to be best. So I would like to say, you know, should we aim, you know, to, to move parking into Saldo? Should we aim to move it into, you know, some, some other uh category as opposed to what's being done now, but we can talk about that hopefully on uh March thirteenth for a few minutes.
Yeah, so we should all hold on it too.
No, the thirteenth, we're gonna meet as a township. We can discuss that in public forum, whether we wanna make any changes for the twentieth, what we're saying.
Say that again, cuz you lost me, I'm sorry.
We're meeting on March thirteenth for our regularly scheduled, so he's just saying on the thirteenth, we can hash out the details for what we wanna say, what we wanna talk about on the twentieth.
Got it.
We just, we, we need to make sure it's in the, uh it's published that we're gonna have a meeting. So we agree it'll be four o'clock. Um I, I mean, I, I'll make a motion that we can, that we will have our meeting on our joint. I would like it to be a joint session, at least to invite the planning commission members. They will call the work session and invite them if they would like to attend. Um on March twentieth at four PM, uh without the need for counsel. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, I just realized one more question. Do we need our engineer there?
Um maybe not in the first session, just so we can kinda spitball exactly what, what we're gonna need, and then in the second session. But my, my objective with all of this is to answer a few specific questions and then draft that into legalese and whatever the engineering e- equivalent of legalese is at the meeting.
I love that too. Great, um any questions or comments on that point? Nope, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, great. That is done. Lastly, um I will entertain public comment. Um yeah, yes, please.
Um Dennis Miller, again, from the Hall Lake Association, and from the Hall of Good Maintenance Fund. Uh my question is, we'd like to have an update on the legal um dumpster business of being voted a residential area in Lake Valhalla.
Yes, Julie, do we have?
I, I closed my tab out, so please bear with me while I bring it back up. I'm sorry about the delay.
I will say there have been some changes at the township level over tightening up um some processes for how we're addressing complaints and follow-up and um so that is, that is good. Um in terms of, by the way, there is now a formal, there always was a formal complaint document. We're now just requesting that e- every person must submit that formal complaint if you have a um a complaint. Otherwise, you have no assurance they will definitely be looked into. So you have to fill in this form. It is available on the, on the website.
Under the forms and documents.
And forms and documents. If you have a formal complaint or concern about um something, please do complete that, so we can properly track whether or not it's being enforced and looked into. Now I'll let you go.
If we did, we did get the formal complaint forms. In fact, several residents in the neighborhood have gotten turned in the complaints.
Perfect.
Um there is one point that was brought to my attention, and I also agree with it, is that we do have to put our names on those forms. we do have to put our names on those forms as the formal complaint in. However, when you go to that person and you tell them that you have a complaint, we would strongly suggest that you say to them, you see to complain and keep that anonymous, because that's a deterrent for people to actually fill out that complaint form. Now, you would still have the information of the person doing the complaint and their contact information on the form. So this way, if it did go to, say, litigation in any way, then that person could certainly be subpoenaed or asked to come in to testify. But I think by going to a person saying, hey, by the way, uh, Johnny Smith down the road put a complaint against you, that's a very big deterrent for people to fill out that form.
I understand.
Taken, isn't that already the case that, that that would be redacted? We don't necessarily, you know, service on, on the people.
It's a reminder for.
Yeah, the, the name of a complaint tent is not something of the release. We have to keep it. Obviously, like you've said, if we end up going to court, we need to be able to contact you and put you on the stand regarding the issue. Uh, and at that point, it will become, you know, public information, who, who's going and who said what. Um, but at that, at this time, our, uh, intent with all of this is to keep this complaint, use it as we need to, to, uh, encourage our zoning officer and keep track of everything that's going on. Uh, but in general, uh, like, for example, we can give you these updates in, in a general sort of thing, but I'm not allowed, um, to tell you, uh, you know, hey, we did this, and then this person said this, and, and go into that level of detail, because we might compromise you as a witness as we, if we do that.
Correct, so, okay.
Um, to get back to your original question, um, we, uh, we, I mean, our zoning officer issued two separate enforcement notices. One of them was sent on February sixteenth, and one of them was sent on February twenty first. Um, we have not received word from the post office yet that those certified mailings have been received. Um, so once we get that information back from the post office, that date will be the day that the new thirty day clock starts again. Uh, and then whoever has been issued that enforcement notice has either thirty days to, uh, comply with what has been ruled. They can appeal to the zoning hearing board, um, or they can choose to just do nothing. And then after those thirty days, we will initial, uh, round two for court appearances.
Okay, is it also sent via regular mail to be signed certified? Is it being sent certified and regular mail?
That would just send certified, yeah, just certified.
Okay, um, regarding the previous um, violations that this homeowner received, um, what is happening with that?
So those previous violations were taken in front of the judge. The judge took a ruling and he ruled for the last meeting. Um, Ron has said that our zoning officer needed to go out and reissue everything. So these enforcement notices are the next step of getting the first enforcement notices that were handed down, issued in court with the fine and all of that jazz, um, into compliance, because at this point, it, it's pretty obvious that this person is not complying with the court order, so we need to cite them again, or, or, excuse me, give them an enforcement notice and go through the process again to bring them in front of the district judge again, and then at that point, it's presented.
I, I'd like to jump in too, so, um, and Ron, please feel free to jump in if I get any of this wrong. Um, I was at, as I mentioned, at he's at supervised training, um, the past two Saturdays, um, and specifically, um, uh, there were several lawyers talking about enforcement, and so, um, I asked a bunch of questions and asked questions after the fact and, um, my understanding, and Ron, please jump in if I'm incorrect here, um, indeed, the process that was just described is the process that you have to do, um, that, but then there is, there is an end of the road in that, um, if there was a ruling, um, that someone is, that is, goes before the judge, the judge rules that, um, okay, it's a fifty dollar fine, whatever, it can be issued that if the zoning officer goes and sees that the, the infraction is continuing, it can effectively issue that enforcement notice every day potentially. Every time it goes to the court, and it would ideally be the same amount every day, but once it reaches a certain amount, which I understood Ron is five thousand dollars, once it reaches five thousand dollars, then it must go automatically to the Court of Common Please. But I also understood that usually the Court of Common Please doesn't like to see it until, um, it has reached that financial amount. The judge has the right, um, the magistrate has the right to, um, issue a larger fine, doesn't have to be like a twenty five dollar fine, so it could get there faster. Am I wrong on that, Ron?
Uh, I'm not sure about the five thousand. I thought it was twelve thousand, but I'll, I'll defer to you if you've just gone to a recent seminar and they're saying that's the number. But I always.
That was a side.
The highest that a district judge could take, which was twelve thousand.
Yeah, or maybe it's a question that after a certain amount, it, it, it seems more reasonable for it to go up to the, to the Court of Common Please, but I think.
Yeah, that could be.
Suing that by the township right now? Are we going to do this to this?
So it has to, it still would have the thirty days to, the problem is partially, there's a new judge downstairs, so it has to, it's still going to have to go through that thirty days, gets enforced, will go before the judge, and again, this is the time that I, we don't, we don't have control over, but once there is a ruling by the judge downstairs, ideally, it says you have to stop. I mean, if the judge rules that he doesn't have to stop, then we, we have to go on another path, but if the judge rules that has to stop, then every day that it doesn't stop, our zoning officer can go out and continue to um, issue, uh, enforcement until the dollar amount gets to a point, if it's still going on.
Okay. So I'm assuming then, so from February sixteen, thirty days from that date is the first.
It has to be received.
It has to be received by the property owner, but once we get that little card back from the post office, whatever date that says, like, assume maybe a week or so.
Doesn't mean it hasn't been received, it's just we haven't gotten the card back by certified mail, so it doesn't proceed.
And if he doesn't go to pick up a certified mail, that's why I asked if it was sent also via regular mail, because normally when we do something, we said it's certified and also regular mail, so we know that he's getting a regular mail, if it's not coming back to us, he just hasn't signed it to the certified. Because in most cases, if someone knows this coming from the township and they know what it's in reference to, they're not going to pick up that certified mail. So now it's going for thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, and the reason why I say this is, and I don't want to sound like I'm being um, nasty about it, but this has been going on since two thousand and twenty.
Three years.
Going on four years, it's going on. It's going on four years now, and we pretty much had it.
Um.
Um.
But, yeah.
I mean, don't you?
Yeah.
I'm, oh, okay. I'm the neighbor.
Yeah.
I'm the neighbor. You've all seen, I have, for, I talked to Wolf years ago about this. I've been sending you all photographs, I mean, my question is, what more does a citizen has to do? The zoning law is there on your website. He's breaking it. It goes on, and he's not, he just says, no, nothing's happening. This guy, do I have to take pictures of his driver every day, which I have done and sent to you, but it can't go on forever. I'm going to retire in four weeks from Sanapi. I've already been told I'm going to lose a lot of money on my house, because I got a trash hauler next to me. And you guys haven't done anything. I mean, is it, I, I really seriously think you should at least discipline Wolf, because I sent you guys all letters and he's never gotten back to me. I called him up, he's, he should play a much active, more active role in this. This is crazy. We're all victims here. I have, I got, I don't know what else to do, unless you want me to escalate it to Tara and, and Cartwright and the press? Can you, uh, all I want is an answer. Can you enforce your zone? Yes or no? It's been three, four years now and nothing's happened. And he's, it's an open and shut case.
I, I think you're overstating that, that nothing's happened. We, we've explained now a couple of times the processes that, that we have to follow to make sure that something happens. Believe me, we, we can appreciate the severity of, of the circumstance. Most of us have either visited this site, and we've all, you know, been familiar with Rob de Toriello's neighbor, who is also doing this very similar thing. We're taking concrete steps. We're not happy with, with the, the speed of it, but, you know, we, we can't really get into personnel on, on, on Ken, but it's not a question of, you know, is Ken active enough on, on this issue? It's, we've taken the steps necessary. There's hardly any permanent staff downstairs with the new district judge, something we don't control, so we're, we're doing our level best. But that, that's, that's what we can offer at, at the moment, and we're, we're making sure that we follow through on these processes.
I, I'll just jump in and say, um, and I think we're I, for, for one, have recognized that this speed has not, not everything, I'm not going to say we've done it wrong, but not everything has done as, has been done as good as we should have done it in the past. I, I fully believe that, and I think that there's been some issues with, uh, lack of understanding from, um, our zoning officer, uh, uh, we're not really supposed to discuss personnel issues that we have in, in separate, um, executive function. Um, but we're aware that these issues are, are there, and we're taking steps to address and mitigate those issues right now, which is why we're seeing two things that have come about right now in terms of those letters, and I, I mean, if it's up to me, you're not going to wait three years. We're, we're looking to address this and escalate this as, as fast as we can. But I will tell you, next meeting in two weeks, we're not going to have a lot more to tell you except for the letter was received, the, the count has, has started. It's been thirty, you know, on this date, there will be either an appeal or a court here, you know, issued. That's the best we can do from a, from a judicial standpoint.
How about a personal?
There may be a couple of things we can do. One is because this guy doesn't even respond to citations that are sent to him, um, in the mail, maybe we could hire a, a marshal to hand deliver the citation, so we know it's been delivered, so we can start the clock running there rather than waiting to see if it comes back to a sign, because what they're saying is he never even signs them, he just ignores it. Uh, the other thing is, we've talked about a, a session, uh, to explore ways to change our code, especially chapter twenty seven, which is zoning. Uh, this is a prime example of something that just doesn't work under the zoning code. It just can't work, and it's got to find another way to put it under a part of the code where we can go out and we can cite somebody, and, uh, maybe it's under our nuisance code, but whatever it is, at least we wouldn't have to go through this thirty days and thirty days and thirty days. Look what we're going through with the, um, a hearing we're doing on the zoning hearing board with someone who on September eighteenth was cited for, um, violating the noise or, uh, the zoning code, I'm sorry, the zoning code about noise. And if it's now March, and this is ongoing, uh, in the zoning hearing board, I mean, come on.
So I would say we also have to, Robert, make sure that we are, as a township, even if, if the ordinance is written properly, that we're citing, you know, doing the things that we're going to do right now with this one case, um, and I do think the changing of, of, of downstairs has affected that how we, the fact we have to go again this time, but, um, we have to make sure that Ken is going out there and citing, especially once a judgment has been made. Once a judgment has been made, that's when you can really, that's where I think we may have lot, um, dropped the ball in the past, is once citation, once a judgment, I don't, was there a judgment on this, this situation for?
Yes.
And that was in twenty five dollars?
Twenty five dollars. I think where our frustration lies is that when this was first brought to the attention of the zoning officer, and I'm speaking on behalf of Rister Duma right now, because he does live next door, um, is that there were so many different zoning violations at that time, but he was never cited any of them, and then a year went by, and it was brought to the attention again, and then another year went by, and in the meantime, it just escalated. I mean, it went from now him, um, you know, putting decks on his house, to modifying his house, to putting in these, um, this huge deco block wall in the back with no support, no nothing. So it actually went to a point where it went to the conservation department. Now, the conservation department came in and gave it until March fifth. He had a deadline from the conservation. They came out on, it was, um, February sixth, they gave it until March fifth to make sure that he takes care of all these violations. He has not done anything. So I mean, right there, that tells you.
And they're gonna have, by the way, they will have more teeth.
Absolutely.
For sure.
He, like we said at our last meeting, DEP is ultimately going to be the ones that's able to initiate an enforcement action that, that really gets much heavier than we can be.
I mean, we, we, we should be able to be very heavy, but the process is going to be longer, and it, yes, it doesn't sound like that process was done properly. I mean, it, if, if there was, if there was years happening be- before, um, when a known, um, uh, you know, breaking of the law was happening, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't here, I can't tell you. Um, that's not really a great excuse either. Um, I can personally look into it more. I do believe there was probably some misunderstanding because a judgment was ruled, and there was maybe a misunderstanding of what that judgment meant. Um, but I don't think, I mean, Ron, this is where I, I'm gonna, if you were here, I'd, I'd ask you a little bit more on this, but I just want to make sure, because from my understanding, once a judgment rules, if he ceases, regardless of what the amount is, twenty five, fifty dollars, that can be, that, um, enforcement can be issued daily um, until the, um, you know, until he stops doing what he's been doing. It does require, it does require that, um, our zoning officer goes out and confirms on a daily basis, um, that, and my understanding is it can't mean a photo is taken. He actually has to go there and confirm it is taken daily basis for that, um, same fine to be levied every day, that he goes there, and then once that reaches to a higher level, then you can get to higher dollar amounts where, and then eventually jail time, I assume when it gets to, you know, I don't, I don't know, when does jail come in? Um, Ron, common please, or is it beyond that?
Uh, I'd have to see how the citation is being written. If the citation is being written as a summary offense, summary offenses can charge amounts up to, under the zoning ordinance, a thousand dollars, uh, and then in default of paying that, then there's a certain amount of days, uh, in jail. But again, I'm not sure how he's writing those citations, because remember, you send an enforcement notice, but if the person appeals that enforcement notice to the zoning hearing board, then that's the way it's going to go. It has to go through this hearing board and go from there.
What if, what if someone appeals from the zoning hearing board to the court? Can they be fined during that period or not?
Generally not, although an argument could be made that they have to post some type of bond or other security that would protect the township in the event it is later determined that they are in violation by either the trial judge or some other proceeding. But if they don't appeal the enforcement notice, it's conclusively presumed. They're conclusively presumed to have violated the ordinance, and the, uh, zoning officer can begin to issue citations immediately if that's the case.
Our ordinances basically say that, that the maximum term of imprisonment that our zoning ordinance, or, or not our zoning ordinance, but our ordinances in general talk about, uh, is ninety days, but I'm not even sure that that actually applies in, in a zoning scenario. I think that would be more up, up to the court's discretion, because at that point, you know, then you're talking about whether or not someone's in contempt of court versus, you know, defying our, our ruling. I don't know that that's criminal.
It would be up to the, uh, the magisterial district judge to determine what is the penalty if it goes that far, so.
Where will we do it? The last question. Why are you doing all that work? I, I, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure that you are in that, I mean, we are doing some things here, we are having.
I, I have been sending photographs of him, Brett, continuing operations. The only time Ken came out was when the guy decided to cr- crunch up a speedboat in his driveway to get into his trailer, that I know. It's been me, and the thing is, we've been taking pictures of this guy, it's getting pretty tense. I don't know, am I a spy? I sent the last picture, that guy who's his fireman friend was really pissed off at me. But he drives his container truck every other day. He's, he's often obviously working off the hook. Is that the kind of stuff that a citizen has to do, or the zoning officer does?
Well, it's one of the things that if, that comes to an appeal, everything you've done will be helpful, because if they appeal, so the challenge, of course, can be the zoning officer goes and this gets hidden, this gets hidden. I don't think that's happening. There, there has been citations provided. Um, citations or enforcement notices?
Enforcement.
Enforcement notices?
Mm-hmm.
But what I'm, uh, just want to say is, it's not in, in vain, in that if, if there was an appeal, that information all becomes very helpful. Um, have that as well, so keep that in mind.
Um, one, one last thing.
Yeah, and I, do you want to?
Yeah, it's really quick. Um, I was the person who contacted the conservation department, and they came out, and I also contacted the municipal. Yeah, it's really quick. Um, I was the person who contacted the conservation department and they came out and I also contacted the municipal waste authority. Have you heard anything from the municipal waste authority?
I have not been contacted that one.
Haven't heard anything then, okay.
Did you talk to Jackie?
I did.
Okay.
And they were supposed to be sending it to you south.
Is that something we can also do?
Yeah, I can reach out to Jackie.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I would like to have an update on that because there's so many violations involved in this, which like we said at the last meeting, is rolling over now into our road maintenance fund and costing us tens of thousands of dollars worth of damage. So, you know, and it all comes from this business. Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah. Thanks.
So this all is reminding me about the planning commission and the agenda item that's been on there since two thousand and nineteen. Um, every month it repeats and it's um, about discussing any oversight or any type of uh, communication with the zoning officer on a regular basis. Um, why, I, I know Robert and Jacob one night tried to explain it, but honestly, it wasn't, the answer wasn't really clear.
So the, the answer is this, I think we were going, um, while Ken is an employee, his role as a zoning officer is somewhat protected. So, so I think that's what, is that where you're, you're getting at?
So.
It is, as an independent, um, that role, not his employment.
Ability to update the township.
Does and he, and he does update. In fact, that one of our updates is we are starting to reinstate um, monthly, actually that all, a lot of this information is tracked. Unfortunately, complaints, which has not been tracked, so lots of permits, lots of um, of, of enforcements, all those sort of things. That's all tracked in a soft, is it in the software or is it just in your monthly reports?
Uh, so that software is tracked and that's online and available for the board supervisors and internal staff to access it.
Those are just the complaints?
No, those are permits, but the goal is to get complaints in there as well.
So we've got, we've got the complaints up and running and we are in the process right now of digitizing all of our permitting tape.
Right.
So we're, we're still building forms and getting everything, but within the next, let's say, month, we will have all of our permitting being tracked digitally.
So does Ken, does Ken provide information to the board of supervisors and/or the planning hearing board or the planning commission on a regular basis?
He provides that information to our township manager, Julia, and that information is coming through, uh, well, it's gonna start coming through as a monthly report to the supervisors, yeah.
Okay, cause yeah, cause I found zone of, what is it, ordinance one eighty-seven that requires him to give monthly reports of
Yes.
Of both to the secretaries of the board of supervisors and the zoning hearing board. That's ordinance number one eighty-seven enacted for eighteen, two thousand and eight. So why is that just starting now? Why hasn't Ken been doing that?
No, it's been, it's, well, Julia, it's been, we've been getting it, it's just hasn't necessarily been these monthly reports to the board, is that right?
I, I, I would say it's the, the, what do you consider talking? And we've had a very informal process and now we are formalizing it.
But the ordinance from two thousand and eight defines an, of, of, an organized process. A monthly summary which shall be transmitted.
Yes, so we've been getting that, so a summary. It has been, but it's just a question of what is a summary? And the summaries have been not sufficient and now they will be more sufficient.
And will those be public record? Sorry, sorry.
They'll be subject to the right to know law, but the, 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 the whole goal and, and the reason why the planning commission and the board of supervisors had a disagreement was because we felt the planning commission was effectively trying to supervise uh, the zoning officer. And separation of powers dictates that that's not the case. So while we've had these internal controls and are strengthening them and Ken also is required to transmit uh, new permits to the county as well because of assessment purposes, which has been happening. Um, we're making sure that we're formalizing the process a little differently and we have a new employee that's essentially dedicated to some of these things, but also, you know, the township has changed a lot since two thousand and eight in that, you know, our population grew by several thousand people and the, and the big difference uh, that, that, you know, we're noticing and that is enforcement, the nature of it is, is changing a little bit. You know, it used to be unheard of that people didn't return certified mail. Now we're dealing with, you know, having to serve people. We had a case where a gentleman was living in Florida, but was illegally operating short-term rental and you know, we eventually, I think, got, got the best of him. But at this point, we're moving forward with it, with a stronger, more clearer process, but it's not to say that one didn't exist at all before.
And I, I, I do think it's important to know, I'll get to you in a second. Um, there are requirements in our ord- ordinance around issuing of permits and if you do not, um, or uh, let's see, other thing, issuing per- permits or anyway, um, but there's specific timeframes. If you don't go through the right process, it's deemed approved. So those are always by nature, by nature are gonna take priority in terms of just timing. I'm not saying that means we shouldn't be having the time to look into complaints. And indeed, if we don't have enough time for looking into complaints, then we need to hire someone, which we have just done, um, to help.
And who is that?
Dana right here, who now accepts all, well, will eventually accept a complaint, but also permits review for for being complete. So there's, there's, we're making changes to enable us to do all this better.
And will you define what a monthly summary is? Like, will that be, will there be a framework for him to fill in the blanks?
We're, we're, I, I don't have an answer to that. Yeah. All right, Pat, yes.
Okay. I, as sort of unbiased observativeness, I was shocked last meeting when I heard all this going on. And it sounds to me like it's a discipline problem with the employee.
It's not just an employee, again, zoning officer is independent.
Has to be precedence on how inadequate performance on the part of this job. Being a former government person, that, that can be followed and something can be done. He can just keep going.
He's not just, so this is the thing, I mean, this, first of all, this is a personality issue and I don't have to discuss it with you. I, I, I'm just telling you, I don't, but I will say, we're, I, I just said, we're aware of it, we are working on it.
Well, I'm not asking personally about the man or the person, but I think.
No, you're asking about employee and I can't tell you about any.
No, no. That's not what I'm doing, my, I'm asking, what is the procedure when an employee in that position has had the kind of complaints?
So it's by law, by law, and Ron, maybe you can jump in. By law, as, as I just heard, it is, it is about, the supervisors have a role to create the law to act in judicial way on hearings, but it's the zoning officer's job to enforce it. And I mean, Ron, where, there's, there's this separation that I'm still trying to figure out as well. And I know, I don't wanna keep going much beyond.
No, that's all right. I, I didn't wanna prolong.
No, no, I'm just, can you help guide me as well, Ron? And, cause I know, I mean, I put some of it on Saturday as well, that this, this role is somewhat independent and you can't tell the zoning officer what to enforce. I mean, you can say, they are, they're tasked with interpreting the law and enforcing that. Correct?
Yes, the zoning officer is charged to strictly enforce the ordinance as it um, is in practice. This, the township supervisor.
It's not, I'm not talking about the second-class township code.
The, the, the township supervisors can't necessarily uh, force the zoning officer to do certain things. Uh, there are laws such as official oppression and other things. They can recommend that the zoning officer do that. And then obviously the zoning officer can or cannot take that action. Now, if the zoning officer is constantly not doing what appears to be reasonable recommendations, well, that's another story. And the supervisors can certainly uh, say that, that zoning officer is no longer part of the plan and fire him or her and then just have someone else uh, take over the position. But just because the zoning officer may not be doing what perhaps a resident may want, does not necessarily mean that the zoning officer is not doing his or her job. And in fact, and this is not meant to be cute, but these, the private citizens also have a right to bring their own lawsuit against the neighbor if they want to. Uh, irrespective of what the township does. So, that being said, I would tread carefully in telling the zoning officer what to do or not do as opposed to making recommendations.
Well, again, which is why we now are improving our complaint process. So there's a clear knowledge, at least that we know which complaints have come in, which have been followed up on and so. All right, it's now.
Just one more here.
Yeah, Jacob, go ahead.
Uh, well, one, uh, Robert actually just texted us, he lost power, so that's why he's no longer with us on the Zoom. Uh, so that's unfortunate, so we can note that for the record. Uh, but also I just wanted to say, without getting into specifics about Ken or any zoning officer in particular, uh, when I became supervisor, I felt that our staffing was inadequate in that there wasn't sufficient infrastructure to support adequate enforcement of the, the rules that we have on the books. When you have one cop for eight thousand people. You know, with Diana, you know, we eventually would like to send her to PESO's training, which is the Pennsylvania Association of Zoning Officers, so she can take some of this uh, on her own. But the reality is that the board has an obligation to furnish its employees with sufficient tools to do the job. And my belief is that some of my predecessors did not do so. My, my first hearing of this case, and correct me, you know, if I'm wrong, is an email in August of two thousand and twenty-three. You know, so I, I definitely sympathize with folks and I wanna make sure that we're doing right by them and by our employees so that we can make sure that both of you are protected and have sufficient tools uh, to, to get what you need. And that, that's, that's what I wanted to say on, on personnel.
Any final comments? Cause I'd like to close this up, yeah.
Twenty-two questions. Um, I feel I have a right to know request. This question's for you, Julia. When you see your thirty-day extension, like that's coming up soon, inspiring. Were I being able to get my request in or are you gonna request another thirty-day extension?
So the way the right to know law works, um, if I, if, if something happens and I am unable to fulfill the request within that thirty days, I can reach out to you and request, hey, something has occurred, this is why I can't, are you okay if we shift this down to weeks, whatever? Um, but you are not required to say yes to that.
Okay. Second, our joint application, how long does it take? What do you guys process that?
Uh, generally speaking, it's about a month. I know that we received yours on Friday. I would just, I, we have to go through the process.
A what application?
A lock jointer application. Um, normally I plan for once we receive that, it's about a month. So peripherally, you'll hear from us in an official capacity, once we've reviewed it and once it's under review. But I would roughly plan for it to be on the, uh, March twenty-third meeting.
What if an additional thirty days on a right to know is not accepted?
I think it's interesting. Um, so the right to know law, I have to provide a response. Uh, I'm not required to provide the documents within that timeframe. Uh, especially like for your example, the massive one that you submitted, where I handed over over two thousand documents for. Um, if you wanted to apply to the office of both the records, you say, hey, you know, I'm appealing this decision, I, I don't have my doc X, Y. Um, they will take a look at the situation here from both parties and move forward accordingly. Um, but generally speaking, you know, it's all about eligibility and making sure that you get the documents for your request.
There may be some changes afoot in this, just because there's new uh, bots that are scraping data and making requests uh, to collect people's information, um, even if it's redacted, but it seems to be there are, I've heard on this weekend, on the weekend, I'm sorry, Jacob, we're gonna end soon. Um, about some townships getting like four thousand requests um, and they're bots that are doing it, but the, the law doesn't say, it doesn't care that it's a bot that's requesting it, if it's coming from a person. Um, but they're probably gonna be taking this up at some point.
They're often for, for commercial purposes and that, that's, you know, the problem.
The state doesn't care if it's for commercial purposes. If you're getting that information because you wanna get a list of people that live in a township or whatever, you can do that. Um, all right, it's now eight oh three. If there's, unless there's anything pressing, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Uh, seconded by Jacob and we've lost Robert, so, um, all in favor to adjourn?
Hi.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you. Thanks for your civil engagements, everyone.
All right, guys, take care.